All right, I have seven o'clock. We're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. Will the recorder please call the roll? Counselor Urban?
Here.
Counselor Fleck?
Here.
Youth representative?
Here.
Counselor Merideth?
Here.
Counselor Savage?
Here.
Counselor Stenning?
Here.
Mayor Solzheny? Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the Father, of the United States of America, and to the Republic where rich and sound on a nation under God, in this with liberty and justice for all.
Items to be added to the agenda? I see none. Apparents of interested citizens for items not on the agenda. This is a time for citizens comment on all items not listed on the agenda for a maximum of thirty minutes. Individual speakers must be recognized by the presiding officer, provide their name and address, and will be allowed up to five minutes or less with council approval. Comments regarding any matters scheduled for public hearing may be provided only in that hearing. Comments on agenda items may be taken prior to council discussion on that item. The council will not engage in any discussion or make any decisions based on public comment at this time. However, the council may take comments under advisement for discussion and action at a future council meeting. The first person I have listed is Dennis Procu.
My name is Dennis Procu. I live at one twenty-seven Tyson Drive, Cottage Grove, Oregon, nine seven four two. Mayor, council. It's my pleasure to be here today to thank you. On January ninth, I asked for a representative of the city that maybe they could come and to Middlefield Estates and clarify the trespass letter of consent. And you were kind enough to send Jake Boone. He came to our board meeting on January eleventh, just two days after I was here. Jake conducted himself very professionally, addressed the subject, and answered questions. The city has been, has a real asset with Jake, I feel, and so does our community over at Middlefield. He conducted himself very well, and I'm personally proud of him. So from our community and myself, to the mayor, council, and certainly Jake Boone, thank you very much for sending it.
Thank you. The next person I have is Dennis Mason.
My name is Dennis Mason, and I live at twenty-eight South Sixth Street, Unit Three, here in the old city called Double. I'll try not to bump into the microphone this time. I was told I was doing that last time. I wanted to thank you for your patience last week as I read a four-minute piece on, called "I'm an Indian in Your Living Room", that was speaking about some of the issues that we're dealing with here in our local community. Since then, I've seen most of you in different settings. Some of you at the brew station, some of you with your family, some of you down the street, some of you across the desk, and some of you out in community. And that is what I wanted to assert here, is my gratitude for being a member of this community. And something that I wanted to put into context about this community and about the history of what we've been facing and why you've heard so much from me at this council meeting, is Martin versus Boise was just as important to homeless people as the Civil Rights Act was to black people. I really want you to put your thinking caps on for a second and understand the context of what we're doing. There is no more sundown towns for homeless people. It's not allowed. It's illegal. Just like one day Rosa Parks could sit where she pleased, but that doesn't mean that there wasn't tension, beatings, violence, police investigation, community pushbacks, FBI interviews, physically being manhandled out of meetings, all things I've experienced in this community. But I've had a real epiphany, and I want to thank you for allowing me to be part of this community. And I want you to understand that I serve as a gatekeeper and a protector of the heart of this community. What saved me, long before Martin Boise was law, this community opened its heart, opened its homes, opened its businesses, and opened its eyes to see and allow someone like me to be here too. So sundown towns for homeless people are over. There's really no more point in arguing about the regulations and how we're gonna do it because one way or the other, it is no longer illegal to be homeless. It's that simple. Just like it was no longer illegal to be black one day. So when you start taking a look at that and you start looking at how far black people have had to come in the meantime, things still aren't right. This will continue going on for a long time, but it's time we settle down to the new reality. It is no longer illegal to be homeless. So it isn't about housing first. It isn't about treatment first. What it's about is integration of homeless people as they are into our community. And that's the law. So everybody has to get used to that. It's really that simple. So replace homeless with black. Take a look at history and understand where we're standing. This town does not need to come into a big pile of rubble and people with pitchforks arguing about service provision. It needs to accept the reality that these people are no longer criminals, just like me. We stand on the right side of the law, and we stand on the right side of history. And I want you to ask yourself real deeply if you would be talking about amenities if that was a cage full of black people downtown right after the Civil Rights Act passed? Because that's what you've got going. We can do better. We have to continue to do better. And in this community, sundown towns are over. These folks aren't illegal. This isn't about amenities, and this isn't about "Don't Feed the Bears" campaigns. And this isn't about personally attacking me. This is about accepting one of the most landmark historical legislative actions in American history. No more sundown towns for homeless people. We're not shuffling them around. We're not hiding them. We're not sweeping them under the rug. And we're not denying them services unto death. And on that note, Bobby Reeves has given me permission to use his full name. He's back in the intensive care unit. He's been triaged three times. He's probably cost this community more than you could imagine and really more than housing would have ever cost this community. He's in intensive care in Riverbend today, and we're hoping he makes it. He's giving me full permission to use his name. And by the way, he too is Cherokee. Anika de Wadi. We are people.
Thank you. Lynda Diaz.
My name is Lynda Diaz. Thank you, council and mayor. It's good to see all these new faces up here. I have worked with the city of Eugene for many years prior to coming to you, to Cottage Grove. And I worked with the Disability Committee, which was under the Human Rights Committee in Eugene. And we did a heck of a good job. We were amazing. When anybody had a problem, they would just come to us. They would explain us, to us, the issues. And they would let us know what they were. And then we would, we would, we would discuss it because we also were people with disabilities. And I thank you for turning on the telecoil tonight so that I can hear tonight because without that accommodation, I wouldn't be able to hear. Without this accommodation, I wouldn't be able to stand. What I've discovered, living in Cottage Grove for nearly thirteen years now, is that Cottage Grove doesn't quite understand the Disability Committee or the aspects of the disability community. We see things different than you do. We, we have different issues than an able-bodied person has. One of the issues we have might be walking down the street, which to you is nothing. To me, it's a glorious day. It's difficult for me to walk down the street. Recently, I was, not recently, back in May, I had been in a improvisational group for twelve years for all, with all kinds of teachers. And I, I had walked to my class, and I'd walk with my walker because I live a half a block away from, I mean, not half a block, I'm sorry, half a mile away from this city. So I use my walker when I go over a mile. And then a couple of days later, I was asked not to come back to that class anymore because I was a danger to myself and to others. Because I did not want to sue anybody and because I know the law and I know that it's not illegal for a person with a wheelchair or a walker to be in a skit or a comedy scene or as an actor. That's not illegal. The place that we're acting in has to accommodate us. Well, I, I didn't want to sue anybody. I didn't want to do anything. I did go to the ADA, I turned it in. The ADA told me that, yes, it was illegal. They wanted to immediately file something. I didn't. And what I wanted to do was talk to the board members of this particular community that I wanted to be a part of and had been a part of. And I did meet with the board members, and I, half of them were rude to me. And they said cruel things. And the other half were kind. And to those people, I appreciate in this community because it's very damn hard to get across the street sometimes and you can't see around the corner. Oh, and there's holes in the street, the hole of the legs that we so appreciate. But when those legs aren't in those holes, Jessica's cane goes in them, mine. Or if there's a chair out there sitting in front of the ax and fiddle, and I want to sit down, and I pull my chair out to sit down, and I don't notice it goes into one of those holes, I fall. I have seen people fall, seriously fall on the corner of, right in front of the ax and fiddle, dangerously. And they're afraid to come and tell you. Well, I'm not afraid. I've been an advocate for thirty-five years or more. And I will tell you. And what I want to do, what I want to see in this community, I want us to grow. I want us to be an amazing community. We all love this community. We have different opinions. We, we all love it. I want to see a disability committee with people like me. People like me or like others who have different disabilities. We can enlighten you to how we see things or don't see things or different than you are. And that's what I wanted to say tonight. I think that you should have some people with disabilities talking about what's happening with Main Street. Not just able-bodied people, but all of us. Thank you.
Okay, the next person is Julie. They did not write what they wanted to speak about. And I can't make out this last name.
I'm sorry, I signed in. Thank you for just me signing.
Oh, you did. You're not the first person to do that. Okay, thank you. And I think that is it. All right, so we're gonna move on to item five, public hearing. Public hearing for an ordinance annexing a portion of Lane County Road, number five thirty-eight, into the city of Cottage Grove. We have a staff report by Mr. Mongden.
Good evening, mayor and council. Lane County Public Works, owner of Lane County Road, five thirty-eight, also on South Sixth Street, applied for a standard procedure annexation of approximately nine hundred linear feet of said road in the northwest quarter section of, Section Four Township Twenty-One South, Range Three West of the Lamb of Meridian. On December twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, signature from the fee simple owner, Lane County Public Works, was submitted with the application. The purpose of this annexation application is twofold, with the transfer of jurisdiction of right-of-way from Lane County to the city of Cottage Grove and to establish contiguous incorporated city limits of the city of Cottage Grove to lands designated commercial in the Cottage Grove Comprehensive Plan. The city has received, following on that, the city has received an expedited annexation application by the property owners of the Hillcrest Market located approximately eight hundred fifty feet south of the current city limits, which ends at the intersection of Sixth Street and Cleveland Avenue. That expedited application will come before council at February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, city council meeting. Legal description mapped the area. Being annexed is attached as exhibits A and B, respectively, to the ordinance. The standard process is being used pursuant to Section eighteen point zero four point zero six zero. The purpose of this public hearing is to receive comments on the proposed annexation of the nine hundred linear feet of right-of-way only between Cleveland Avenue and tapped, Cleveland Avenue on the north side and Tapped Avenue on the south. The city has received two written comments in response to the notice of standard application that was dated January third. This notice was mailed to neighboring property owners within three hundred feet of the subject area of proposed annexation. The written responses were from Trudy, butchered her last name, Sladeger, at seven seven nine one five South Sixth Street and the Cavalry Baptist Church at seven seven eight seven three South Sixth Street. Those comments have been provided to council for consideration. The content of the written notice from Miss Sladeger states the annexation of South Sixth Street does not make sense without improvements at the I-five interchange to the south. Comments from Cavalry Baptist Church acknowledges that the church property is not specifically affected by the proposed annexation, but they are concerned that future annexations heading south will affect them in regard to meeting city standards for development. Staff is happy to address any questions you may have regarding the content of the written responses. It is now appropriate that council hold a public hearing on the attached draft ordinance.
Let's open the hearing. Anyone want to speak?
My name is Michael Parker. I live at seven seven nine six nine South Sixth Street, directly behind Hillcrest Market. I have two concerns. I know you're just, I guess, taking over the control of the street, whatever's happening. But I'd like you to be aware that in the time I've lived there, there has been one death by car, car accident in front of Hillcrest Market. Also, should this all happen, I'm concerned that there is a sign that says forty-five miles an hour a block or two before you get to Hillcrest Market. And my concern would be that if you do this, that it seems like that's the only place in Cottage Grove where you can go over thirty-five. So I hope that in this discussion you folks have, that you will look at that and maybe post signs to slow the traffic down at least past Hillcrest Market. Hillcrest Market is growing, which I'm happy to see happening. Meet a lot of people there. But there is that issue of speed going down there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? I see none. Close the hearing. Moving on to resolutions and ordinances.
Consent agenda?
Consent agenda. Item seven, resolutions and ordinances. Item A, resolution amending the comprehensive fee schedule. Staff report by Mr. Stewart.
Thank you, mayor. So the city council has established a comprehensive fee schedule, which was created to include a listing of fees for various goods and services provided by the city. This resolution amends three sections of the comprehensive fee schedule. In Section One, which is government, was added, was amended to add credit card use fees and increase the return check for non-sufficient fund fee from twenty-five dollars to thirty-five to reflect the increased bank fees. And I would just add that the credit card fees are not applied to folks that pay their utility bills with the credit cards. It's for the other items like copies and various incidental charges that we deal with. The second is Section Three, which is utilities, was amended to increase the charges for new three-quarter inch water meters from two seventy-five to three fifty and one-inch water meters from three twenty-five to four hundred. This reflects the actual cost of the meters, including the antennas for the new automated meters as they go in. Section eleven is the community center, armory, special event, and park fees and policies changing references to keys to access devices. The city has installed access control systems in the community center and the armory. The new systems use access cards or fobs to enter the armory or use, enter the armory or use Shepherd, the Shepherd Room, refreshment hall, or kitchen in the community center. Included in the deposit collected to use the armory or rooms in the community center is an access device fee for lost keys, cards, or fobs. The new language replaces keys with access devices to cover the new access cards and fobs. And then finally, for your information, the SDC charges were adjusted January first, two thousand and twenty-three pursuant to Section five point one six point zero four zero of the municipal code. The changes in the SDCs are noted for your information and for codification in our chart, in our ordinance online. And the fees increases are based on the construction fee cost index figures published in the Engineering News Record Magazine for twenty cities. The ENR Construction Cost Index rose five point six percent from December two thousand and twenty-one to December two thousand and twenty-two. The resolution includes, increases the SDC fees by five point six percent to reflect the increase in construction costs. And the recommendation is that the city council adopt the resolution and amend the comprehensive fee schedule.
Is our resolution number two zero eight nine?
Madam Mayor, I'm just gonna ask patience again. Friday, I brought up, this has always really been a matter of concern for me. Back in two thousand, I think it was nine-ten era, we raised our SDC fees about three hundred percent. And I was really worried for our community that we would kill construction as a result. That hasn't happened, but I'm certain it's had some impact. And so I was a squeaky wheel enough that this ended up on the consent agenda quite often, just as a way not to debate it. But I, I am just gonna one-time remind folks that we need to be careful that we are cheaper than our jurisdictions around us where we will lose projects to other communities. This is a huge, when you add permit fees to SDC fees, it's, it's a big burden for folks to start housing. And we so desperately need housing. We're passing MUDs. We're doing other things to, you know, encourage development. And so I just urge caution that I, I would love to see us, you know, talk to the FCS folks and look at our comparators again to make sure that we're, you know, competitive. I mean, I'm not suggesting a full study. I know that the League of Oregon Cities had tried to do a voluntary reporting so that people could compare, but some cities did it, some didn't. And I don't think it's a very useful tool at this point. So I guess I just, like I said, I, I, I thank the council and the audience for their patience. But this does concern me a little bit, especially right now when inflation's high and we're driving these SDCs based on that when in fact we really need housing desperately. So I, with that, thank you for your patience again, and I'll move that we adopt resolution two zero eight nine.
A second.
Got the motion in a second? Any discussion? Counselor Urban?
Thank you, Ms. Snegar. These particular SDC fees, I can live with. I can understand journalism. I know the bank fees are, well, those aren't SDC, but the bank fees are pretty common, thirty-five. I know that the rollout of the, the meters have been a net positive for the community and a number of, you know, accounts of excessive water bills being curbed by, by quick finding and the work of the staff to, to reach out. I would echo that, you know, it's, it's difficult to make a decision not knowing where you are in relation to others. So I would echo that I would like to, to see where we are in comparison to comparable cities and the future we can maintain the competitive edge.
And I would just like to say that I also feel the same about the SDC fees to base it on construction costs for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two when we all know how high all those costs were this last year for builders. So, but I guess just be cautious of that going forward. All right. The recorder, please call the roll. Counselor Merideth?
Aye.
Youth representative?
Here. Aye.
Counselor Fleck?
Aye.
Counselor Urban?
Aye.
Counselor Stenning?
Aye.
Counselor Savage?
Aye.
Mayor Solzheny?
Aye.
Item B, second vote on ordinance number three one six seven as amended, amending chapters nine point two eight and twelve point two four of the Cottage Grove Municipal Court regarding offenses by and or against minors in city parks and public playgrounds. Staff report by Mr. Myers.
So this is the ordinance that was postponed from the previous meeting. It was prepared strictly to address House Bill thirty-one fifteen and other provisions of Martin Boise and Blake and Johnson cases to address homelessness and regulating and giving us, cleaning up our ordinance to meet the obligations required to address homelessness in the community and protect those, to comply with those laws. Other provisions of the park ordinance were not changed. It was changed and we did the audit, strictly looking at how this would impact homelessness and those experiencing homelessness in the community. We made the changes from the previous meeting, prior to the previous meeting, regarding putting in the phrases sleeping, sitting, lying, sleeping, and keeping warm and dry to replace a lot of the camping provisions or, or statements of camping to address those. I do want to address the references[1655.64] I do want to address the references to verbiage or language in the whereas's. The whereas's that are contained in this are recitals. Recitals mean those are times when we're reciting or we're stating the narrative of why we're looking at the decisions we're making. They are not law. These are just background information about why we're making the decision and taking the action that the ordinance then takes. So they have no law or legal standing other than lining up the, the background for that information. There were questions regarding some of the definitions, survival sheltering is used in here. We kind of borrowed that from the City of Bend. One of the reasons we borrowed that from the City of Bend is we're trying to describe what happens in the community. If we continue to just say sitting, lying, sleeping, keeping warm and dry, then people parking on the street in a vehicle and camping in a vehicle or other things going on, we wanted to make sure that any of those things were covered. We're regulating those as well as survival, survival sheltering to make sure that if something changes in a court case or a definition, they add another term in there, that's included in that so that the ordinance will continue to reflect that. The ordinance is prepared, we did change. One of the things the attorneys found is our provisions associated with curfews in the parks or curfews in the community. We changed that and got rid of it because it would, if there was a minor on the street and they were staying in the night and they were on the street, then that would be impacting homelessness. The interesting piece of that is, um, Houseville thirty-one fifteen says we can't have it into our ordinance, but it doesn't say anything about it being in state law and the exact same provisions are in state law. So we would be enforcing the ordinance, the law of the state instead of our own city ordinance. And so we removed it and we still have that opportunity that if we need to, we have it in place. You have two copies. You have one that has the yellow markup from the last amendments and then a clean copy that is for your final vote.
Madam Mayor, I move that the council adopt ordinance number thirty-one sixty-seven as amended, amending chapters nine point two eight and twelve point two four of the Cottage Grove Municipal Code regarding offenses by or against minors and city parks and public playgrounds.
Got a motion in a second?
I want to clarify the motion. You said as amended. Some of the yellow you didn't see because you said to do that at the last, the meeting before last, we changed the verbiage to match the court cases. And so we're asking you to adopt it as presented because some of that is different than what you asked for.
Okay, I modify my motion to as presented.
We have a motion in a second? Any discussion? Counselor Irvin.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. The first whereas, so I'm understanding that the whereas's are not the ordinance, but they are the justification for the ordinance. And some of like the second part that the city manager mentioned was so that you can amend and add things to your ordinance down the road. This is kind of a higher level concern, but it comes down to, and I know there's division in this country over this right now, too. It's what, where entitlements lie and what each person is entitled to. So I dug down into, you know, definitions of things and I find it difficult to define wellness. There are some basic definitions, but entitled, to be entitled to something means you have a, a claim to it. It's something that is owed to you. And I don't know, well, I don't, I don't believe that wellness is something that the citizens of Cottage Grove are, and are, should be forced by some, in some way to provide specifically to someone else, especially if it's well, not well defined. This is the first justification for the exchange in ordinances. So that's, so I wonder why we're doing that, why, why we're stating that and whether it's necessary to add, there's an entitlement to wellness when this, the spirit of what is being said here that I can agree with is that we owe, we owe each other on a personal level for basic dignity, respect, hospitality, but it's not something that you can demand from me. And more can I demand it from you to be, to be paid to me. So that's, that's kind of concerning because it seems like this is the basis for, you know, using the tax base to move resource without the consent of the, of the, of some people. Some people will give it willingly, others say, no, this isn't my highest priority. You know, my family is at this time. And so I just see that these, these are principles that are being added in here that I can't support.
The, the definition of wellness is basic good health. We are a healthy community. We have that designation from the state. We have parks, we have bike trails, we have a no smoking policy in parks, we have all these other things, we have farmer's market, we have recreation programs, we participate in all kinds of different things that are wellness. And that's what this is talking about, you know, the ability of our citizens, all citizens to use the parks and to enjoy the parks, to recreate, to have some physical activity, to do things that promote their wellness. This is not giving some kind of entitlement. This is things that we are obligated or not obligated, but we have an opportunity to have and possess in this community, a basic level of dignity, respect and wellness. It's not saying we're gonna be buying healthcare for people. This is just that opportunity to have the ability to live life.
So perhaps we could remove the ordinance title since you said it's not an entitlement.
Kind of, I, I guess I'm, I'm perceiving this as a little different, that, that we're not actually, and I'm, I'm just gonna read kind of word what the city manager said because I agree with what he's saying in that we're not providing an entitlement like a government program where we're actually providing something. What we're doing is guaranteeing the right of a citizen to provide for themselves. And so if they're out in the cold, we're saying they have the right to have a sleeping bag. We don't have to give them that sleeping bag. Now, that being said, there are agencies like the one I work at that do help with those things, but that's not saying that it's an entitlement to the thing, it's saying they're entitled to provide for themselves. And if they don't have shelter to be able to stay warm and or dry, they are entitled to that right. And I, I would actually uphold that with all my breath, that folks have the right to keep themselves well in what the city manager's saying. So I think it's just a little bit different, you know, take on that terminology. And I, and I, I agree with you, entitlements are a challenge, but also an opportunity. And so I think that there's, you know, good discussion in that. I, I think that at this point, you know, I, I don't, we don't necessarily need to agree on this thing, but I do think that in, in that regard, I think that's why the Ninth Circuit Court made the ruling, is that folks have, should have that opportunity to stay warm, even if they're unhoused.
Yeah, no contention over that, that people have the right to live. I don't see it as separate from the right to live and survive. So that's not the contention. It's when it's paired with what is happening and the thrust of the management plan and everything else that goes beyond what the courts have, have said. And so I, I have a very difficult time seeing the reality of what's going on right now and saying it's not that, when this is just another piece in it. I mean, there's a couple of things that seem to be evidence to that in the whereas's, which is the stated, and I don't know where the second quote to it is exactly, but you're making the justification for the need to continue this program and this push because of the rise in the numbers. Well, that just so happens to coincide with, there was something in here, maybe it was somewhere else, but that, that part of justification for additional funding was showing a certain percentage of, of the numbers. It's like, wow, how convenient. Now we're, now we're stating it in the whereas as justification for this. So it does, to me, I have no problem with someone's right to survive, to live, to make it. I don't believe that that means that they have the right to take from, kick you out of your house, like the European star, you know, goes around and blasts every other native bird out. That's not okay. Or to usurp the goods that someone else, I, I believe that there is such thing as personal property and that it's, it's a difficult and impactful thing when a group of representatives choose to move your resource to somebody else against your will. So I believe that that is what is happening here. It, it robs, it robs the community of resource to be generous with and it robs them of their, to some degree, you know, some will feel it less than others, their ability to provide for those that they're in direct responsibility over, whether it be their children, family and making those. So it's, it's not a thing to, to take lightly. And I know it's not explicit in here of what it means, but when, we're not being clear that this means that people are entitled to, without, you know, entitled to this outside of what the city will provide. It, it seems to be because it's an ordinance and it's stating the reason why we're making these changes and justifications are that we've put in the shelter, that we've created designated spaces, that we have, we have changed the use. And that's because they're entitled to, to this, those who would, who would fall in the category of city sleeping, lying, survival sheltering. And so also when I see survival sheltering, that's a new addition, that's not what we had discussed. We've been pretty specific in the past unanimously that we wanted the language changed to, to camp. So I, I have to wonder, okay, what's the next change? What's the next move coming up that's being set up for? And I've just noticed that this is the pattern. It's just a slow push and then once that happens, then that becomes the justification for the next. And it's against the will of a lot of, a lot of residents here. With the will of a lot as well, I recognize, but I just, that's why I'm mentioning it.
Sorry, I don't need to jump in too much here. Remember, this piece is actually separate from the sheltering that we're doing. This piece, even if, you know, in two years we can't maintain funding and that operation goes away, this piece will still be relevant. And so they're, they're, they're separate pieces. And so I, I just wanted to kind of point that out as a clarification, you know, because I get the, the concerns that you're airing, I just, I, I think this piece actually is, is not quite the same. And I'm not trying, I'm, I'm not nailing.
I would think, look at the timing that we've had in all this. We, we had asked, and I remember it being a mutual consensus, have this piece brought to us ahead of time. And it was said, no, not until we knew the direction of the thing that's in place. So it's really hard to separate the two. I do understand that this is an ordinance and the other are discretions that can change, but they are, it is, it was crafted to bolster this plan. I, and if that's not true, I'm happy to be reeducated, but that's, I mean, from the timeline on how precise we were about, no, we're not gonna see these ordinances until we do this other thing. It's really hard to sit here and say, yeah, they're totally separate. Just remember, they're totally separate, they have nothing to do with each other when all the whereas's mentioned, you know, I mean.
I also have a question about state and the city ordinances are the state law. And what happens when the state now takes that off theirs, where it's?
That's something that can happen, but if we had ours on the books still, we'd be sued and we'd lose.
Any more discussion?
I think Counselor Savage had her hand up.
Thank you. I, I just want to express my frustration. You know, I feel like we're getting really nitpicky and we have to, to some degree, have a little bit of trust in our fellow humans that we have community with. You know, I, I feel it's, it's great to start defining things, but it gets down to be this slippery slope where it's just like, we can go deeper and deeper and deeper and we just end up running circles and we're not getting anything done. So I appreciate the need to clarify, but I'm also feeling a little bit frustrated that, that we can do better, you know? If, if these are real questions, let's get them done between Wednesday, when we have the agenda, or when, Wednesday, when the agenda comes out and Friday at the agenda session and taking up time. I mean, this is a repeat of Friday, which is a repeat of the last Monday. So I, I appreciate it, but I, I think we should move forward and appreciate each other and give each other a little bit of trust.
Counselor Mary Day.
This was before my times. I'm not as well up on it as the rest of the council, but I thought the purpose of re-clarifying these resolutions was to give us more enforcement ability in our parks. Was that the intent?
It's, it's one of the attempts and intents, and we did that with the resolution and the adoption of the, the management plan. This now cleans up the ordinance so that we don't have the violations of thirty-one fifteen and, and the stat, the, the court cases. It also puts that reference to the management plan in here as well, so that we still have the ability to prohibit sleeping, sitting, lying, keeping warm and dry on properties in the city. And we can designate where that can happen so we can have some regulatory abilities. That's one of the thing, things that was in the notes on the court cases is, yeah, there may be opportunities for you to regulate and provide some time, place and manner. And what this ordinance does is seal that up into those time, place and manners for, for that resolution and the management plan.
Seeing that, I think it would be a wise move to, to adopt this. We need to make some final adjustments to the language. Is that, would that prolong the process and take it to another vote?
You could, there could be amendments this, this time around, too, and, and amend it for the.
Would, would that satisfy your concerns, Counselor Irvin?
I'm largely okay with the language of the ordinances. I didn't mean to take up the time on those specific issues the way, when, on the ordinance pieces on Friday. It's the justification for them that has me concerned. So.
Would you like to amend some language?
Well, there was, I'd like, I'd like to know the specifics of what's down the road with the survival sheltering, why that's in there. You said it was part of the bend.
It is not putting anything in that this will happen. It is identifying what's going on as survival sheltering. So that's the only reason it's in the whereas's. And as you read those sentences, those paragraphs that have survival sheltering, it talks about, here is what is going on in the community, there's sleeping, sitting, lying, keeping warm and dry and survival sheltering happening on our streets. We're regulating those. That's why we're doing this. And so that's why it's there. It's not talking about adding survival sheltering. It's saying, yeah, these things, but if somebody's going to define staying in RV on the street differently, we're considering that survival shelter.
So that's specific for RVs?
Or cars or any other method that somebody may say, hey, this is, we're, we're keeping out of the elements, we're, we're, we're camping. And survival sheltering has been in here since the first draft of this ordinance. It is not. So if you read verse, and whereas thirteen, it is the purpose and intent of the city council to provide standards for sitting, lying, sleeping and keeping warm and dry and survival sheltering on city property. It's, that's why it's there. We're trying to widen that, that definition out of, this is what we're regulating. And then we tie it into camping. So when our ordinance talks about camping, it means all those things. So somebody doesn't come in and say, I'm not camping, I'm not sitting, I'm not sleeping, I'm not lying, I'm survival shelter. Well, no, it means that, we're regulating that. You can't do that here. You can do it over here, but not there.
Sorry, it's not making sense. If it's in the whereas's, how is it enforceable?
What am I missing?
Could I give a try? So, so this is brand new legislation that we're coping with and there's not a lot of case law around it. And so the whereas's are to develop the intent of the body so that when it's taken in as a whole. So if we just did one thing without any sort of discussion about the ramifications, we're less likely to survive a legal challenge than if we have fully documented all the steps we took and all of the intents that we met. And so a lot of our ordinances will just have a few whereas's because there's maybe case law already on the books. There's maybe, you know, it's been something, or it's an ordinance that's so clear that there isn't the need to describe it. I think that there's a lot of challenges and this has been evolving, you know, from, you know, Martin versus Boise to Brown versus Brown, wasn't it?
Blake.
Blake, I knew that wasn't right. Blake versus, you know, Grants Pass and now Johnson versus Grants Pass. And every one of those court cases has changed this a little bit. So this is a moving target and I think this is our, the whereas's are our attorney and our city staff's attempt at, you know, forestalling legal action against the city. The ordinance is what's gonna be enforced. And so the whereas's are not necessarily what we're gonna be using in the actual law. They're the, the, the mechanism we're gonna use to defend us if somebody says one piece of our law isn't right. Does that make sense?
And, and if you go to the definition of camp or camping in the actual provisions of the ordinances after the City of Cottage Grove ordains as follows, and, and it refers to, it means to pitch, occupy. and, and it refers to, it means to pitch, occupy camp materials or camp for the purpose of occupancy, habitation or sheltering for survival. And that's our connection in saying, this is what camping means to us in this ordinance. As any of these things, then that's what we're going to be regulating. And that's why we've tried to tie that into the whereas's and then we tie it into our definition so that we can control and regulate that through the ordinance.
Well, thank you for going over that. I want to address that. You know, I, I take a little bit of offense to the assertion that you have to come in between Friday and Monday. That's fairly unreasonable for, for some of us, considering what's on our plate and doing our due diligence to try, try to absorb these things when they are new. And, you know, this is the time. This is the time that's allocated. And I do try to make an effort outside of that, but it's not reasonable a lot of times.
Counselor Savage.
Thank you so much. I apologize, Counselor Irving, if that felt personal to you. And, and that was not my intent at all. My intent by, by making that statement was to take this time that we have to be as a body of six and soon to be seven to hammer out the fine details. But a lot of these questions are not necessarily shared between the fellow members. And so it's not a bad thing, but it, it also is something where, you know, if you have questions, please feel free to reach out. There's amazing staff who can help answer those questions. And so I'm just encouraging that. So I apologize if there was offense taken. That was not my intent at all.
Well, the very fact that it's not shared by all the counselors, what makes this a strong body?
I agree. Okay. So is there any more discussion? All right. While the recorder, please call the roll.
Counselor Fleck.
Hi.
Youth representative. Counselor Merideth.
Aye.
Counselor Savage.
Aye.
Counselor Stenit.
Aye.
Counselor Irvin.
Aye.
Mayor Solzmann.
Aye.
Item C, first vote of ordinance annexing a portion of Lane County Road number 538 into the City of Cottage Grove. The staff report by Mr. Martin.
Thank you again, Mayor, Council. Council has held the public hearing on the proposed ordinance to annex approximately 900 linear feet of Lane County Road 538, South Sixth Street between Cleveland Avenue and Taft Avenue. It is now appropriate that council considered the attached draft ordinance for the first vote to some items of future actions that the council will have a resolution brought before it for the City of Cottage Grove to request jurisdictional transfer of that section of right of way from county jurisdiction to city jurisdiction for the purpose of maintenance and permitting of driveways and things like that. This ordinance has been available for more than one week. Prior to this meeting, a staff is recommending adoption. The recommendation is after council deliberation, city council hold the first vote on the attached ordinance. The ordinance has been, was prepared and has been available for at least one week prior to the meeting. This ordinance could be adopted at one meeting.
Any questions? Ordinance number three one six nine.
Madam Mayor, I move that ordinance three one six nine be adopted.
I give you a minute or so, please.
Oh, sorry.
Didn't want to supersede that. If this is irrelevant or it's already been discussed, forgive me, please. But why, it, it, it looks here like because the conditions have been met, the county wants this. Why does the county want this to happen? Why should we want that?
Mayor, Counselor Stenit. So as far as the want, as mentioned in the staff report for the public hearing, we do have an interested party in the ownership of the Hillcrest Market to develop that property to city standards. That is, they want to remove the existing Hillcrest Market and reconstruct it, a new convenience store with gas station. That's an amazing opportunity for the City of Cottage Grove from a commercial development standpoint. When looking at the extent of this proposed annexation going instead of just 150 linear feet to create that continuous connection to the Hillcrest Market parcel, there are other greenfield development parcels to the south on the eastern margin of South Sixth Street. And so when looking and discussing this potential action with Lane County, that was determined to be the preferred course of action to not come back piecemeal over time. As you're well aware, the city council's not made it practice to force the annexation of any private property, at least that I'm aware of historically. So this would just be the right of way. But it does allow for future development of that south end of town. South end of town in 2012 was actually brought into our comprehensive plan map and largely dedicated for commercial development with the hopes of someday being a nexus for a second full interchange on that southern end of town. The bridge itself, when reconstructed, was done in such a manner that it would permit the additional cloverleaf necessary for the northbound off ramp and southbound on ramp. And so this is just kind of one piece of that long range planning puzzle that has long been in the works.
Thanks. Again, forgive me for repeating. Can you maybe at least briefly address the church's concern about future annexations?
Certainly, Counselor. So as I stated, this council as a body does not necessarily force annexations historically. That said, they're currently operating right now in such a manner that they would not need to be participate in the City of Cottage Grove by incorporating per city or water or anything like that. That said, council did adopt an extraterritorial connection ordinance, I believe, last year that would allow them to connect, say, without annexation. Well, now that they're contiguous, that might be a little more difficult just because that's all from non-continuous. But basically, this annexation, if adopted by council, would put the road as part of city limits and put them within that 200 foot buffer. That means that if they want to subdivide their land or something like that, that by comprehensive plan designation from Lane County and City of Cottage Grove, they have to follow City of Cottage Grove's processes. So that being the commercial designation that was adopted by this council in 2012. But that would still allow for the operation of the church. Again, it's not something that the council is requiring them to do or anything like that. Did I answer your question?
Yeah. So they're going forward or to come to us with regard to?
So, you know, in the specifics of the letter, they were concerned about having to pave their parking lot and things like that. That was one of the specific things that they pointed out. So requirements of connecting to sewer water. Actually, within our annexation ordinance, you, you have to be in city limits generally to get sewer water. But there's not actually something that says once you annex, now you have to. Usually it comes along that they want to anyway to have the reliability of our water sewer system. Or if they're already on it through a grandfathered process, they receive benefit of the in-city limits rate. How this might affect them going forward, like, you know, even if they did annex again, we don't say your parking lot's non-conforming, you have to pave it now. You can drive around Cottage Grove, incorporate city limits and see many areas that, you know, predate the current paved parking lot requirements for. And so that's the subject of that. As far as the other written comment received, and as mentioned in this staff report, when the City of Cottage Grove becomes the jurisdictional authority for the section of South Sixth Street, that would mean if somebody wanted to put in a new driveway approach, they don't necessarily need to be, they don't have to annex into the city limits to do that. They would just need to construct it to city standards. But the county has the standard as well. So it may not be as aligned with ours specifically, but there would, it still just can't be cut the back of, curb off of leg ground.
Counselor Savage.
Yeah, actually you just about hit everything I was going to say. I probably should have said it upfront before I made the motion. But yeah, in, in 20 years as a council or a planning commissioner, we've never forced an annexation. I'm not saying that we wouldn't. I mean, if there was something that was desperate, I mean, it's, you know, that is where the city is most likely going to expand our urban growth boundary when we run out of housing. We've gone south for our industrial commercial. We, we are going to go east for our housing. So, you know, it probably won't be for 30 or 40 years, but at some point, you know, depending on what resource lands are out there because farmland is protected under, you know, the state. So it's quite possible we would not be able to expand that way. But this is what, why we do our housing needs analysis so that we can determine if we have a 20-year buildable land supply. If we reach the point where we don't, then we have to look at expanding our urban growth boundary. And if I remember right, the county does have a different zoning if they're in the UGB of another city to kind of do a hybrid zoning so that if they had a change, it would be similar to cities so that they're actually in line with what would happen with future growth. And so while I, I don't want to say never could happen, I'm pretty reluctant unless the, you know, public's need way outweighs that of an individual. So far, it's not happened in 20 years. So I, I'm very comfortable doing this, especially since it's not specifically about that property.
Any other questions, comments? Counselor Savage.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. I appreciated the comment earlier about potentially lowering the speed limit. Does, would this annexation include lowering the speed limit in front of that location?
Mayor, Counselor Savage. So I actually live way out on the pass lake. I drive by every day and I, I did hear the gentleman state 45 is the sign, but actually right at the interchange, it does go to 40. And then at Hardy Place, it goes to 35. Speed limits are implemented based on traffic counts and speed data and things like that. So it would be my understanding with this ordinance for annexation, there would be no change to the current posted speed limits. It would take something such as proposed, you know, future development, future traffic counts, things like that, that would need to be taken into account to seek a modification of the posted speed limit.
Wouldn't inserting a gas station be future development?
Certainly would. I just don't know that, you know, when thinking about the gas station, I've had this conversation with the developer, you know, there's already the existing convenience store. So it's, it's difficult at this point to say how many more vehicle trips are going to be specifically generated on top of what's already there. And so they are going to conduct a traffic analysis as a requirement of their type three land use process. And so I would anticipate that we would let that kind of drive any of those potential mitigation items. That said, given the width of the right of way and perhaps Demi could answer this question a little better from his traffic engineer lens, it's still a fairly large road at this point. And so it would be difficult to, to hang on that right now.
Thank you. I appreciate your clarification.
Mr. Mars.
So in, in addition to that, in the last legislative session, they did pass a bill that allows cities to go and reduce speed limits outside of the normal process that ODOT has had in the past. So there may be some additional opportunities there as we explore that, that legislation, but don't know.
Thank you.
But wouldn't we still have that pesky manual of uniform traffic control devices? So you heard warrants mentioned earlier. I mean, there have to be either accidents or there have to be, you know, I, I, this is the complexity of government.
It might, it might not. That's.
So that was a while. We did have a motion in the second, correct? All right. While the recorder, please call the roll.
Counselor Stenit.
Aye.
Counselor Irvin.
Aye.
Counselor Fleck.
Aye.
Counselor Savage. Youth representative. Counselor Merideth.
Aye.
Mayor Solzmann.
Aye. Thank you.
Okay. Business from the city council. Taylor Avenue sidewalk project. And we have a staff report by engineer Ron Bradzey.
Thank you, Your Honor. Good evening, counsel and Your Honor. The packet I gave you was very lengthy and I apologize for that. I just included a lot of the history that surrounded this project. I'm going to abbreviate that unless you guys want to go there. September, excuse me, yes, September 21st, 2001, Councilman Irvin brought a concern. He had received a complaint about some pedestrians falling on a section of Taylor Avenue between South Tenth Street and South Thirteenth. Then on the following council meeting, October 11th, staff provided reports outlining options that we could do to replace that sidewalk. Meeting, council adopted, or excuse me, passed a resolution as well as issued a sidewalk notice. They changed the, with their power, they changed the 30-day requirement to like six months, I believe, that that sidewalk order would be, need to be completed, people were told to. Since issuing the sidewalk notice, staff has met a couple times with the residents. One time was kind of a town hall meeting. They had a lot of questions. They're trying to determine if it was best to team up with the city, go to bid. At the time that we talked to them, the project included replacing curb and gutter. And the project initially was going to replace sidewalk as well as driveway approaches. One of the residents did do his research and said that he felt that it would be better economically if they teamed with the city. And so most of the, everyone within the project said, you know, we're going to team up with you thinking we'd get better prices. In April, excuse me, in the November of, staff went out for bid on, just said improvements, curb and gutter, street patching, handicap ramp, sidewalk, driveway approaches. We got two bids back from the six we sent out. They were both over $100,000. So since that time, as you know, we have an EDA grant now for Main Street and required max of, I believe, $1.25 million. So there is financial concern. So staff is asking you or coming to you tonight, asking what do you want to do? I laid out four, I guess, four options. There's a modification. You know, one is just do the sidewalk without the handicap ramp. I made the handicap ramp individual because the new handicap ramp for Harrison School is pounding water at the entrance. So we may or may not, again, that's not something we want to see during our time when it freezes. So, you know, we can stop short or include it. Again, those options are in one, two and three. One is just replace the sidewalk. A and B would be with or without the driveway approach, or excuse, handicap ramp. Option two is replace sidewalk and driveway approaches. Again, A and B would be with the handicap ramp, without. Item three was basically continue the bid that we had would be curb and gutter, driveway approaches and sidewalk. Again, A or B would be with the handicap ramp. Option four is do nothing. So staff is looking for direction tonight. If I can answer any questions, please ask, White.
Questions?
So I'll kind of reiterate my comments from Friday morning. I, I all, I, I, I do believe we should do the sidewalk. And, you know, the. And, you know, the reason we put an order in is we can pretty much, as a city, say, look, you need to replace your sidewalk, and it's on you to do it. You are responsible for that sidewalk from your home, and if it's in ill repair or roots push it up so bad, like they did on, what was it, Second Street with those big oak trees? And so, you know, the city can and will, if there's a hazard, tell folks to fix their driveway. So we could just say, fix it, and do not, you know, let the homeowners do it. I really appreciate Counselor Irvin bringing this forward, and I believe the city should do the sidewalk and the ADA on the corner there, and maybe look at drainage when you're signing it. The rest of it, if the homeowners want to redo the rest of their driveway, and I would encourage them to do that, because there's gonna be a huge cost savings, you know, in going in on a bigger project. But that's gonna fall on them. You know, if they wanna finance that piece themselves, because we're potentially leaning all of those homes if they don't pay for this upfront, which is gonna obligate the cities until they sell it or pay it back. So I'm reluctant to do that, especially given our other challenges with our other grants. So that's kind of where I'm at, and I'm, which one would that be, a one A or B or?
Option one, one A.
One A would be the, just the sidewalk. So that's kind of my take.
Counselor Senate.
What's the cost of just the ring? I believe it was about twenty-eight hundred dollars, around twenty-eight to three thousand dollars. And I'm giving that to you from the quotes that we got over a hundred thousand dollars. I listed that separately, and it was about twenty-eight to, I wanna say twenty-eight, thirty-five sticks in my mind. But there's a lot of work with, you know, trying to get the different slopes that are required, get a flat, and then how it approaches into the streets, and try to get all that type of stuff done. You know, there may be a contract that may be well enough to, you know, we may be able to, I've done it, is grind out a little bit, little bit of depth around the corner. The problem we would have was creating the lip at the entrances, but that would create drainage around. So there would be some modifications to do, do there, but yes. To answer your question about three, thirty-five hundred dollars would be the highest.
Curious why it was given as a choice. It almost seems like part of the side of the, I mean, you get to that place, and there's, there's like,
well, like I said, that's the way I viewed it, you know, it was thing, but, you know, again, the handicap ramp was not gonna be assessed to the property owners, it's gonna be assessed to the city. If we're trying to be financially smart with our money with the new grant and this, I wanted to give you folks the option, you know. Granted, that's not a lot of money in the grand scheme of things, but it's thirty-five hundred dollars. I didn't say no to the ramp, and not in curb, it could happen, so I think we do it.
Counsel Irvin.
Thank you. That, I recall now a lot of comments about where that ramp went in, that it's pooling up, and so it'd be fantastic to sort that out as well. This is another safety improvement. And I support also, yeah, the sidewalk is what is dangerous. It's most cost-effective to just stick to that. You know, having homeowners be able to tag on and have separate contracts, or while the, whatever company would be doing the work, we're doing it, but I'd like to see it happen soon.
Counselor Mary Day.
Thank you, ma'am. The cost per taxpayer is listed as between twenty-four and six thousand dollars. Is that still in the ballpark, or is the cost?
You've gotten, we've kind of played a hand, kind of guessing what you folks might like to do. We've gotten a couple more quotes. We have a quote now for doing all the sidewalk, didn't include the handicap ramp for twenty-nine thousand dollars. So that brings it down roughly to three thousand dollars a person? No, less than that. So I'm sorry, it's twenty-some, it would be under three thousand dollars. I couldn't do the math. It's thirty thousand divided by.
Two thousand one hundred and fifty-seven is what it was.
Thank you. So again, the difference is the cost has been basically the driveway width, the driveway approaches. You know, if you think of sidewalk only being four inches wide, where cars drive across, six inches thick, and our standard have, I think, three feet on each side to go outside that driveway approach. So the width of that thickened area on each property owner is different.
Counselor.
Original discussion, there was discussion that that rolled curve was outside of code, that there was a desire, I believe, to sort, to get that, maybe one of the last ones in Cottage Grove, into compliance, as I recall it. Was that, was that piece what brought it up to a hundred thousand?
That was, I don't have the bids in front of me, Councilman, or, excuse me, Councilor, Madam Mayor. I spoke without being recognized, excuse me. Councilman Irvin, it was part of that hundred thousand dollars. Yes, again, for the twenty-some years I've been here, we've had straight-faced curb, and that's always been the desire. In that town meeting, their people, the residents, didn't like it at all, and some of them didn't, if you remember, as well as, you know, it's outside of what we have called our standard.
Because they were saying that people drive up onto their lawns when parking to go across the street. That creates a more difficult to see when they're getting out, it's non-standard. So that's where I'm trying to figure out, the hundred thousand is that also with the driveways? And then they have to get paid back, or can we get a quote for the curb, just the sidewalk? And does redo of the ADA ramp?
The hundred? Excuse me, ma'am. The hundred thousand did include, you know, mobilization, erosion control, traffic control, placing, replacing the handicap ramp, replacing curb and gutter, replacing driveway approaches and the sidewalk. That, that all was over a hundred thousand dollars. The additional things that people requested, like additional driveway approaches, replacing walkways, I'm gonna call it, between sidewalk and the front porch. And somebody else wanted to widen his drive, his path, and then somebody wanted to pave their driveway out of the sidewalk. And those amounted to about thirty-two thousand dollars.
Yes, I would like to echo, keep it simple. Let's do the minimal, but I would fix the handicap approach as well, the ADA.
Can I ask a quick question? Mr. Bradzey, I almost said Ron. I'm trying to get better at this, too. So if somebody wanted to do the curb in their front and their whole approach, they could go in with a contractor, but would that be weird with it rolled in parts and?
Yeah, we, there is some already that way in the project. If you look at like Tenth, excuse me, just east of Tenth Street, like for the first property, we tried to address it several years ago, and I know we switched from the rolled gutter to straight. But I also know that the contractor, the house has come out, because it was very flat. And he was concerned about the range coming around the corner. I thought, again, because we heard about the ponding, and if we took the curb and gutter, we had the flexibility of being six hundred feet long to adjust the grade slightly to get a better fall down around the handicap ramp. I don't think it's a problem, back to your question, Councilman, about, you know, you know, one section being curved, one section being rolled curve, I guess, face curve versus rolled curve. I feel that if they wanted to do the curb, that's, according to our code, I don't think that's their cost. I think that's the city's.
Okay, thank you.
That's my personal opinion. Richard, do you have a thought?
Okay. I, I think that's part of the road structure to me, that.
Which we can also charge to the homeowner. It happens.
If you do an LID or something, yeah.
Right.
Typically, it's just the sidewalk. LID is more of a formal process.
Right.
Votes.
Well, I remember.
Yeah. So it gets a little lengthier, but we could do it, yes.
So if I can move us along, I believe it's item or choice one A, I think we have consensus on. So I move that the council adopt item one A and move forward with the planning and working with the homeowners to facilitate the rest.
Second. We have a motion in a second. No more discussion, okay. The recorder, please call the roll. Counselor Mary Day.
Aye.
Youth representative. Counselor Savage.
Aye.
Counselor Fleck.
Aye.
Counselor Irvin.
Aye.
Counselor Senate.
Aye.
Mayor Solsky.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, moving on, do you concerns from council? Business from the city man, oh, go ahead.
There's, there's the pedestrian plan. There's a B.
Yes.
On the bottom of the page.
Thank you. Item B, Cottage Grove pedestrian and bicycle plan advisory committee appointment. And we have a report from planner Eric Monken.
Thank you again, Mayor, counsel. The city of Cottage Grove has received a Transportation Growth Management, TGM, grant from the Oregon Department of Transportation to study the city's current pedestrian bicycle infrastructure and to identify opportunity areas for capital improvements within the existing street slash right-of-way system. This will include Development Code amendments and establish a complete streets approach to right-of-way development for current and future right-ways within the city. Once completed, it will be adopted as a refinement to the 2015 Transportation Systems Plan and the Transportation Section of the Cottage Grove Comprehensive Plan. An advisory committee comprised of representatives from the city council planning commission, urban forestry committee, South Main School District, consultants from HDR and ODOT, and other community stakeholders will help guide this planning process with the assistance of HDR consultant and ODOT. The advisory committee meetings will begin in February of this year, be concluded by summer of 2024. Recommended that two city councillors be appointed to represent the council on the Cottage Grove pedestrian bicycle plan advisory committee. Available for any questions, too.
We had some interest from Counselor Fleck and Counselor Mary Day. Is that correct? And is everybody good with that? Okay, all right. Go ahead.
So the, these other organizations, are they choosing their representative as well?
Mayor, yes, Counselor, Counselor Senate, they'll, as far as South Main School District, work with them. Hoping to get somebody from the transportation side, in addition to maybe one of the, you know, vice principal or something like that to participate, just to kind of inform what they know about the students, what they're seeing on the streets and things like that, and other transportation end of things. Just how those bus operators interact with our pedestrian facilities, I think, is very important as well. Let's see, as far as Urban Forestry Committee, Planning Commission, yeah, that's similar to this body, volunteers.
I'd see it nice to, if we can endeavor to have folks from the disabled community included as well, however that happens.
And that is certainly one of the goals through our Title VI requirements.
Thank you.
Thank you. Concerns from council.
Really? Okay.
I'm sorry, Counselor Savage. Go ahead.
Thank you so much. It's very interesting to zoom in on, I have to say, this was my first Zoom council meeting since I was appointed eighteen months ago. I just wanted to give a shout-out this Wednesday. Couple of us are headed up to City Day at the Capitol. I'm really excited. I know city manager, Mr. Myers, has gotten us a couple of meetings with Senator Conrad as well as Senator Hayden, and I have coordinated with Senator Prozansky. So we've got lots of fun meetings that we'll be attending and relationships that we are going to continue and start building. I also just wanted to jump up and down a little bit, because I'm really excited about this. In March, when I am headed out to Washington DC for the National League of Cities, I have been invited to take a personal tour of the White House. And so I look forward to bringing back a little report on that. So I just wanted to share that.
Great, thank you. All right, business from the city manager. City council discussion and possible direction regarding design criteria for the Main Street revitalization project. A staff report from Mr. Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor. So early this evening at six o'clock, we had a work session. We have attendance with branch engineering, Damian Gilbert carried the design concepts and potential ideas for Main Street project. So branch engineering is ready to start creating the construction and engineering documents for the Main Street refinement project. City staff held the work session, and city council shared a design option for three areas of the Main Street project. They are street and sidewalk width, street corner bulb-out design, and street trees. Staff needs council to give direction on these items for the project design to begin. City staff created a webpage for the Main Street refinement project, invited all property and business owners along Main Street directly impacted by the project to a conceptual design discussion this past Wednesday evening, which allowed them to give feedback and to provide to the city council. That feedback's been typed by Ms. Nye and distributed to the council members. We also placed ads in the Kaido Excentral Chronicle and was graciously hosted on KNND, a Before Beeper program that shared the information with the public and invited them to comment. And the project was also shared on social media. This outreach was intended to inform, educate, solicit comments regarding the three design criteria the council will be giving direction on staff, to staff on. And the comments have been made, given. I'd also like to share that we did receive some written comments from Mr. Blackstone, and those have been distributed to the council also. And I just really wanna thank everybody for their participation in the comments that we've received to date and the questions that councils asked us. It's very important the council will give direction regarding the street sidewalk widths, street bulb-out size, and street trees as soon as possible as the Economic Development Administration, EDA, has imposed timelines on the approved grant. Have this project under construction by February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four. It will take branch engineering approximately eleven months to complete the construction documents and, and additional four to six weeks to solicit construction bids to meet that timeline. So the recommendation is, is for council to deliberate, ask questions, and potentially give us direction this evening or at a, the next council meeting if possible.
Any discussion?
So one other quick question. So let's see, we give you direction tonight, and when we look at the final plans, there's some little tweaks that need to happen. Is that still something that can be, I mean, how, how set in stone does this become?
Mayor, counselor, my own, it's working, okay. There are pretty important details in the big picture, such as we don't want to get down the road designing bulbs and then have them pulled away, because the ripple effect is huge.
I'm sorry, can I clarify? I meant like tree positioning. That's the thing I'm actually thinking about, is we lay out trees and some property owner says, gosh, I don't want it here. That's more what I meant. Obviously, a critical street. Obviously, a critical street infrastructure is going to be much more challenging.
Not as much of a ripple effect at the surface of trees.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Senate?
How much direction are you actually asking for regarding the trees? I mean, we just said--
I've heard two per block. I've heard two to four per block. That's the level of direction, but I prefer to hear one or the other. And if I hear two to four per block, I'll work with city staff to actually look at the buildings and put them in the right places and things like that. And some blocks, it will be pretty easy to get four in, and others it won't. Might be difficult to get two in. I'm anticipating that the layout will look pretty similar to what's out there today, honestly, just because it's the least impacted businesses. And yet it does bring trees. But I don't need an exact number, but a little range or direction, I think, would be pretty important.
I did like the two to four, based on the layout.
Counselor Savage?
Thank you so much. In my end, I have the impression that the business comments are distributed there at council chambers. Because I haven't received any packets or letters. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing something. Thanks.
We have Blackstone.
We see that this--
I didn't receive that one.
Counselor Irvin?
Thank you, Mayor. It was one of the comments I remember distinctly was the placement. So when you said that the trees are largely where they are going to be at least impact, there was two ones that I can, that are standing, three that are standing out. Like, oh, this was a bad placement.
Yeah.
So I would like to see that the-- And the other concern was if you just are kind of leaving it up to where the business owners want it, then you might have unevenly spaced, kind of not a good layout just for driving through and look and feel. So something standardized is why I was kind of favoring to on the corners. But, and then, but I liked Counselor Savage's suggestion that you could fill in green space with a well-placed bushes that aren't limiting viewability around corners, but are still adding green. There's probably a lot to explore there.
Like I said, when I looked out my window today, I was looking down Main Street. Although we started with five or six trees per block, a lot of the trees are gone now because people have cut them down. So a lot of the blocks have only two. And I would say two. And I know a lot of business owners don't want them. And then a lot of people, like I said, it's a sacred cow, want them. And so I think I would love to see two per block.
I agree with all of it. That's the problem.
Counselor Merideth?
I think in giving direction, can we specify? I take it it's a given that the trees will be placed in tree wells to prevent the problem. So that's kind of a non-issue. But so that trees are placed judiciously so that they do not impede flow, do not impede access to businesses, block historic facades, or signage. And that will give some, if they're just every, okay, if we're going to put them every 20 feet or every so much of a distance, then we could actually create those problems. So two per block, but with those criteria so that it's optimal placement for that block. And they might not look the same every block, but that'll give variety and interest. And plus, it won't give the negative effects of trees.
Fantastic.
Can we put that kind of into guidance? I know there's a lot of blah, blah, blah.
And then let's move on to the bulbouts.
We could do bulbouts or street width.
Okay, street width?
So street width, I guess my two cents on that, I can compromise to 12. I was really hardcore set on leaving it as is. What is that, seven years ago, eight years ago? You know, but that was in part because the, you know, trying to save the existing trees. I think it's very clear to anybody who's paid attention downtown, those trees have to go. I mean, they've lifted foundations, they're doing damage. They weren't the right tree for the, you know, for the space. So with that, you know, I've heard on our discussion tonight, I think 12 and a half is the largest and existing. Maybe there's a compromise somewhere in between. You know, like say an 11-foot sidewalk, which would give us, what would that be? An extra foot? 13-foot traveling down from 14 and a half? I mean, like I said, I'm not set on any of this. I'm just trying to come up with a consensus so that we can all kind of live with, you know, where we're at.
Counsel Irvin?
Yeah, I'm not set on that either. You know, as Counselor Senate and Merideth were talking about, the trash cans and everything is like, yeah, it's-- It needs to functionally be wider to be a usable sidewalk where you're not squeezing in between. And, you know, if someone's walking a dog, everybody stop over to the side and then it's kind of-- So I could definitely go with the 12, but then that creates that concern of the turn. So I would prefer not to see the bulbouts on the, on Main Street. I know that was another concern about keeping the look and feel just going down Main Street. So I could go halfway in. Maybe we can eliminate them on the, on Main Street, but keep them on side streets, which has that effect that we're talking about of pushing cars further down to make that turn more doable. And with, I think that still works with the-- If there's no bulbout, you still get that little triangle. It's pushed a little further down the side streets. But it still creates somewhere where you can. And we address the issue of you can, will not enforce the joint--
Counsel Savage?
So the thing about the bulbouts is for pedestrian safety primarily, I would assume. And so the advantage would be on your wide section, which is going to be Main Street, not the side streets. And so I guess I would actually go with no bulbouts, you know, rather than your, your well. And I see that. Of course, it moves that parking down a little bit, which would eliminate some of the problems at Sixth Street as well. So I'm not really set in stone on that, but I do think if we're going to do them, they should be on probably the Main Street side.
But we could do them a smaller bulbout all the way around. And that might look more uniform anyway, but just on the smaller side. Maybe that would be a good compromise.
If we do it on the bulbout on Main Street, that would eliminate a lot of the concern about turning onto the side streets, I think.
Counselor Senate?
They're not placed on the chair. I would be able to remove something that the engineer placed there because he thinks we need them.
Mayor? Counselor Senate? Damian's here. In his workshop, work session presentation, he said he can accommodate ADA without the bulbout, but it's going to be more difficult. And it's probably going to look different at each intersection because of the different elevations and how he has to accommodate it. Poles being in place. With the bulbouts, it just gives him the ability to make those ADA ramps more uniform, fit easier, and make this sidewalk more usable between the building and where the crosswalks are. So I'm going to put some pedestrian out a little wider to see down the road, too.
Okay. So the primary advantages of the bulbouts that I see are crossing Main Street visibility is probably the largest advantage. But creating a space at the corners for pedestrians to stand and wait to cross streets, especially at signals, I think that's also pretty important because there's just really no place to do that. And then finally, it's just more space for things like light poles or trees or signs and things like that to go that don't interfere with pedestrians. I think adding a few feet to the sidewalk is going to help with that also. We will need to be very clear as to where the clear passage is, whether it's up against the building or the street side or in between. Just so it's not scattered and people putting things in what's supposed to be walked or passed through. So when we finished the work session, we had explored something that sounded pretty advantageous to me. It's a, it sounds like a decent compromise, and I'm not recommending anything. But I think you guys had arrived at this on your own was smaller bulbouts on the side streets. Right? Not, nothing huge, but enough to kind of control parking. And then Main Street bulbouts. And Counselor Senate, you're exactly right. We will be looking at each one in more detail. But what you're seeing there is kind of a sketch and generally how it could end up. But each one, each corner will be designed and looked at carefully.
Counsel?
Would there be a scenario where, like, my understanding is Sixth Street is the tight, is the narrowest, and then it progressively gets wider? Would the intent be to keep the bulbouts or to keep the widths the same? Like, would you do progressively wider bulbouts as you get wider streets? Or would that be said, no, we need to have a bulbout look on each one?
Counselor Stewart?
Thank you, Mayor. Counselor Irvin, I use the measuring tool on the DIS and Fifth, Sixth, Seventh, and Eighth Streets are the same width, 33 feet.
Really?
So I think there's a perception that Sixth Street is narrower. I think it's because the buildings are tall and there's always cars parked there. It is always that hard to park. So. Good to know.
Counselor Savage?
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. I'm in favor of the smaller bulbouts. And if we have a site that's bigger, I would be more interested in leaning bigger towards Main Street. I think about taking a right on Seventh Street if I'm headed down to the hardware store. And actually, if I'm headed forward, if I'm headed east on Main Street, and somebody else wants to take a right, they often scoot in right next to me, even though that's not a lane. And I think a bulbout would stop that. That's always made me a little bit nervous when people create their own lane there because there is no parking right there. But there is parking over at that Sixth Street intersection. So that scenario doesn't happen there ever. That's interesting that you say that they're the same width. That you said Sixth and Seventh are the same width, or Seventh and Eighth?
Mayor, Counselor Savage, the ruling device on the RGIS, I found them all at 33 feet. So they're all the same.
Thank you so much.
So do we have direction?
I think we have consensus. Should we spell it out? Are we going to go with 12? Is that what everybody's okay with? So it sounds like we're with 12 feet. We're going to go with the smallest bulbout to accommodate ADA in a uniform fashion? And we're going to do, was it two to four trees based on? On?
Or was it two?
Two. And I'm okay with two.
Yeah, two.
Because I like the uniformity idea as well. I think if it's haphazard, I think it's going to look weird. Okay.
Mr. Bradspie?
That's the whole block or one side of the block?
Oh, I'm assuming it's on either side.
Yeah. Thank you, thank you.
Could I ask for a little clarification also? I heard minimal bulbouts. Are we talking about somewhere in, like I was suggesting, maybe the couple of feet on the side streets and a little bit larger on Main Street for crossing? So we're minimal altogether?
I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with that, too.
I like a little more. So that was an or question, wasn't it?
The--
Minimal on both sides?
No.
Yeah, it was an or. So it's minimal on both, main and side, or minimal on the side.
Oh, basically, they're or. Yes.
I like more on Main Street. I think there's further to need to see, to be out there a little more to-- Yeah, that's where I'm--
Okay.
Yes, safety, pedestrian safety was mentioned by many, many people. Lots of bad experiences on Main.
We okay with that? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Also want to clarify one thing. I read in a letter, a book, testimony that was just given to you that everybody that was involved in that Main Street plan were gone. And I were on Bradspie's there. I think my name is on that book, too. It's on the municipal advisory committee background.
Thank you.
Can we acknowledge that it was a long and involved process back in 2015? There were a lot, there is extensive, very impassioned. And I think we should acknowledge that. And I take very seriously the, you know, kind of the, you know, the plan being handed us to, you know, to, where the rubber meets the road, as they say.
Thank you. All right. Item B, approval of branch engineering task work order number one for engineering services for Bohemia Park Entry Plaza project. A staff report by Mr. Stewart.
Mayor, we're just going to change batteries. So Branch Engineering, City Engineering Record, prepared a task work order proposal for the Bohemia Park Entry Plaza project. City has been awarded a total of $1,675,307 to construct the new Park Entry Plaza. Branch anticipates completing the construction documents late spring or early summer of 2023. Upon completion after the construction documents are approved by the EDA, a formal RFP will be released to solicit construction bids in July of '23. The proposed cost for task order number one is $150,000 for preliminary and final engineering, and $60,000 for construction, engineering, oversight, inspection, closeout, and as-built plans for a total cost not to exceed $210,000. So the recommendation, it's a little bit different because I received counsel, legal counsel's input this morning, actually Sunday evening, from Carrie. She would, the recommendation, the city council is to move approval of the task order, the list of tasks, and the amount of $210,000, and then authorize the city manager upon approval from the EDA of the contractor in the task order before his signature.
I think I got it. So I move the council-approved task, work task-- So I moved the council-approved task, work task order number one from branch engineering and the lists of tasks for the amount of $210,000 and authorize the city manager to sign the task work order upon approval of EDA list of tasks, work order and amount. Does that sound like the appropriate motion?
Should that say not to exceed 210?
I think it was pretty close, but upon approval of the, of the contractor by the EDA and the task work order.
So moved.
Second. Was that a second? Okay. Do we have a motion with the second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? All right. Item C, approval of branch engineering task work order number two for engineering services for Main Street Revitalization Project. Staff report by Mr. Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor. So once again, branch engineering is the city engineer record and they prepared a task work order proposal for the Main Street Revitalization Project. The city has been awarded a $5 million EDA grant to reconstruct historic downtown Main Street from Eighth Street West to make a Main Street Bridge. Branch, that combined with the 1.25 million of the city for a $6.25 million project. Branch anticipates completing the construction documents late December 2023 or early January of 2024. Upon completion and after construction documents are approved by the EDA, formal RFP will be released to solicit construction bids in January with construction starting late February 2024. Proposed cost of the task order number two is $690,000 of preliminary and final engineering and $250,000 for construction engineering oversight, inspection, closeout and as-built plans for a total cost not to exceed $940,000. Once again, this is very similar to the recommendation in the previous task order that council move approval of the task work order, list of, of work order list, the not to exceed $940,000 project costs and authorize the city manager to sign the work, the task work order upon approval by EDA of the contractor and the, the task work order.
Mr. Stewart.
You moved that the city council approved task work order two from branch engineering for engineering services to develop construction documents for Main Street Revitalization Project. The amount of $940,000 and authorize the city manager to sign the task work order.
Approval of the EDA, the contractor and the.
And the task.
And the task.
Yeah, and they approved. So approval after, upon completion and after the construction documents are approved by the EDA for a formal RFP.
Second. Got a motion with the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Names? All right. Report from the city manager.
Just one item today at 5 o'clock was the deadline for applicants for the vacant council position. We received eight applications. One of them, we believe, is not eligible because they also submitted their, their pedigree, which showed that they were born in 2012. That's not the only problem. They have four feet, but so we have an application there. So we have seven. We won't release the names right now because we haven't checked all of them with the county to make sure that they actually are electors. County closed at 4 o'clock and some came in after 4:00. And so we'd like to get those out to you tomorrow. And with them, we will send you a couple of lists of questions that the council has used in previous council vacancy processes. One from 2016 and one from 2021. In the past, the interviews have been 15 minutes. There were 13 questions in 16. And in '21, they tried to get through 39 questions in 15 minutes and they didn't. So these questions, feel free to edit and mark them up. We'll probably ask you to get them some comments back for those on Friday, by Friday. And then if there's a similarity with everybody, we'll, we'll fix that before we do any interviews. And we'll probably go through questions and see how they fit and which ones we really want to ask that you want to do. And then we'll start the interviews on Monday at 5:30. So expect to see this information tomorrow. We'll probably email it to all of you so that you'll have it, start being able to look at that.
Mr. Myers, would you prefer us to give you maybe our top 10 questions and then you go?
Yeah, if you wanted to mark, if you wanted to go through the big list and, because the 13 on the old list are on the big list. So if you wanted to go through the big list and just circle the ones that you wanted to do or let us know, yeah, I like numbers, this, this and this, that would be great. And we could compile those, maybe get it down to 25 or something in 15 minutes.
Oh, I was just going to ask, are we going to round robin like we do in our committees where each person asks a question or are we going to have the mayor ask all the questions?
You can decide that Monday before we start. So I, I think we'll have some little time for you to iron out those things and pick which questions you want to do and stuff that way too. So we'll, we'll, remember it's 5:30 here and then we'll start probably with interviews, maybe 5:45, 6 o'clock and give you a little bit of time to get ready. And then we'll pop them out in 15 minutes. Except for one.
All right, so yeah, no attorney tonight. So this meeting is adjourned.